Okay, hello, how's everybody tonight?
Good, how you doing teacher?
Doing good, doing good. And we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll get started, we'll, we'll start the prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord God, we come before you this evening. We come heavenly Father because we come seeking your word, we come seeking understanding of your word. And we pray heavenly Father that you bless us with it. We pray that you allow your Holy Spirit to flow between us, Lord, and join us together, Lord. And heavenly Father, we pray that you allow your Holy Spirit to do the teaching. So that we might receive what you have for us, and we thank you, and we praise your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. All right, we, um, we're still in Luke. And, and tonight, we're still working in Luke chapter eighteen. Last week, we talked about, you know, Jesus was, was telling some parables about, you know, talk about a persistent widow. And, you know, he was dealing there in persistence, he talking about prayer. And, you know, basically praying and ceasing not. So he, he told a parable there, preparing a woman that's talking to, you know, a judge, basically is, is a judge that didn't fear God, didn't fear, didn't care about people. And how could her persistence got announced for her? And, you know, he goes on to say, if, if, if this judge respond, then what you think about your heavenly Father? Okay, then we talked about, um, how, um, the, um, you know, when, when, when Jesus talked about the children, you know, how they were coming to him, and he's like, you know, this is how you have to come to me, you know? And there was some discussion on, you know, characteristics of children, you know? Basically, child is coming or coming honestly. They come, they, they, they come to be taught, trained, and, you know, the things they pick up early. Or, you know, the things that they hold on to. And, you know, and, and that's what's within them. And, you know, Jesus letting us know that we, we have to become humble. Ready to receive from him, ready to receive from God, and be trained in doing things in the way of God, you know? Okay? All right, so tonight, we're gonna continue on, and I think tonight, we start with, on chapter eighteen, and then we'll be starting verse eighteen. Chapter eighteen, verse eighteen, so if somebody would read. But before we do that, anybody have anything they want to add from last week? Okay. All right, so if we go from verse eighteen down through verse thirty, somebody will read that, and then we'll.
The rich and the kingdom of God. A certain ruler asked him, "Good teacher, what must I do to inherit eternal life?" "Why do you call me good?" Jesus answered, "No one is good except God alone." "You know the commandments, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not murder, you shall not steal, you shall not give false testimony, honor your father and mother." "All these I have kept since I was a boy," he said. When Jesus heard this, he said to him, "You still lack one thing. Sell everything you have and give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven. Then come, follow me." When he heard this, he became very sad, because he was very wealthy. Jesus looked at him and said, "How hard it is for the rich to enter the kingdom of God." "Indeed, it is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for someone who is rich to enter the kingdom of God." Those who heard this asked, "Who then can be saved?" Jesus replied, "What is impossible with man is possible with God." Peter said to him, "We have left all, we had to follow you." Truly, I tell you, Jesus said to him, "No one who has left home, or wife, or brothers, or sisters, or parents, or children, for the sake of the kingdom of God, will fail to receive many times as much in this age, and in the age, and, excuse me, and in the age to come, eternal life."
Okay, thank you. Class, somebody wanna start a discussion on these verses?
Yeah, I wanted to point out one thing. When it says about the camel to go through the eye of a needle, that's not like a sewing needle. What that was back in Bible times is the, the city would be, you know, have a wall around it. And at a certain time, they would close the gate. And anybody who wanted to come through had to come through a small doorway, it was very small. And what they would have to do is have the camel get down and go through this, this hole. And it was called the eye of the needle. And it was hard for the camel to make him do that and to get through. So that's what Jesus was referring to. But as you can see from this conversation, that it was very difficult, because the people said that, "Who then can be saved?"
Okay, all right, anybody else got something they wanna add? Okay. All right, so, so now here, notice a certain ruler. Certain ruler come to Jesus. And, um, so, so, so some things we find is Jesus dealing with different things, and, you know, right now, he, his, his ministry is, is really coming to an end, and he, he, he knows it. And so, he's cranking it up, and, so, you know, and, and he's, he's getting his teaching done, he's getting his training done. And so, we find him that the Bible is recording different scenarios that he finds himself in, and his response to those things. And, um, you know, which are teaching points, you know, for them, but he, more importantly, for us as well. And, you know, one thing that we find about the Bible is, I think it's written in Matthew, or maybe John, but anyway, it talks about, if, um, everything was written that Jesus done, the world wouldn't even have room to hold it. So what happens is, when we see the Bible and the things that's written in, those are the things that, you know, that, that, that I believe God had felt was important for us to know. Those are the important things that, that, that we need to get to help give us understanding of him. So when his rainbow word come, we will understand that it's him, and we will understand that it's the character of him. Okay, so when we see what's put together in the Bible, we're, we should know that the certain stories or certain parables or certain, you know, real life incidents that happen, and especially what Jesus talking about here, is something that is important that we get, important that we understand the message behind what's here. Okay, so when we look at this, there, there's different scenarios, you know? Because this is one of the scenarios where someone come to Jesus and ask him, you know, about inheriting the kingdom of heaven. And then it's gonna, you know, and then we know, there's somebody else gonna come and ask. So these are different scenarios here before us, okay? So, um, when we look at this one, this particular one, Jesus just earlier in, you know, chapter seventeen and earlier parts, he was dealing with the importance of not being so focused on the things of this world, the things of this earth. The possessions, or whatever it is of this earth, don't be so, you know, concerned about it. You know, where he talked about, you know, on the rooftop, don't run in. And basically, it's running after stuff, because you, you know, you worried about what you have. So he, he's, he was teaching that, and it's building up. And so now, we got someone that, you know, here's a rich ruler. And he comes to Jesus, asking, "What must I do in her eternal life?" Now, um, you know, when we read these things and, and see these things, it's good when you can kind of put a picture of what you think going on, and it helps kind of amplify the meaning, meaning to you. So, you know, when, when I think of this, you know, and especially knowing this parable, or this story here, it's kind of like, you know, make you think, he came up to Jesus, asking, "What must I do, you know? Good teacher, what must I do to inherit eternal life?" And, and maybe he's flashing, you know, his money, or flashing his, you know, his bling bling or something. And, you know, and, and, and so that don't impress Jesus. You know, that, that, that does not impress him, that, that's, you know? And so here, Jesus is like, "Why did you call me good?" So Jesus don't just look at the surface of things, or he don't just hear and, and go with the surface of things. You know, he, he go, he, he sees spiritual, you know? He, he, because right now, he understand why, and know why this guy's coming to him. You know, "I got everything here, I got all these possessions, I'm rich. The only one thing I don't have is what this Jesus is running around here talking about, when he saying eternal life. Eternal life, that's forever, and I got all of this money, but I'mma die. I need to go figure out how can I have eternal life too." Okay, so, so, and, 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 you know, when, 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 when people have riches, and they totally depend on the riches, they feel that they can buy whatever they want. You know, sometimes people feel they can buy whatever they want. You know, they, they, they treat people however they wanna treat them, and they can do whatever they wanna do. But here, he come, and Jesus understand, "Why, why you calling me good?" You know, there's no one good but God. You know? And he goes on to say, "You know the commandments, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not murder, you shall not steal, you shall not give false testimony, honor your mother and your father." Okay. Now, here is, here is the response that he give Jesus. "All of these I have kept since I was a boy," he said. And twenty-two said, "When Jesus heard this, he said to him, 'You still lack one thing.'" Now, all right. So, notice what Jesus saying, well, we, we see what he saying, but notice what he didn't say. Jesus didn't say, "Uh-uh, you, you messed up, because you, you said this about so-and-so, or you did this." He didn't say that, did he? No, he didn't say that. It's like he saying, "Okay, yeah, you, you know, it, it..." Now, we, we look at this, we see this in a couple of ways. First of all, you know, Jesus may, and mind me, he's saying, "There's no need even dealing with that, because right now, that's not important." Because he's looking at it from a world standpoint, from an earthly standpoint. So there's no need for me even deal with that, because, you know, if I'm gonna go in here and, and, and tell him, "Yeah, you did murder", you know, he's not gonna understand it. Because in his mind, he's like he's done everything right. But I want you to notice something that he didn't, that's not, um, in this, um, in these scriptures right here. You know, at the time, they were dealing with ten, right? Ten commandments? And so Jesus, he hit, you know the commandments, "You should not commit adultery," that's one. "You shall not murder," that's two of them. "You shall not steal," that's three of them. "You shall not give false testimony," that's four. "Honor thy, honor your father and your mother," that's five. That's dealing with people. That's dealing with people. The other was, he didn't, he didn't touch on was, you know, "Have no other God before me." Okay, first of all, knowing this, um, this, about this incident here for us, we know now that he had another God.
Yes, the money, the value.
Yes, he, he had another God, you know, J- Jesus didn't throw that in there, now he could've came and put that in there. You know, he could've said, "Have no grave image." He could've, he could've throw those up there, but he didn't touch that. Because first of all, what Jesus realized is, and he was, this was dealing with how the, part of the commandments that deal with how we treat one another. Okay, so he's trying to say, "I got it together, I know how to treat my brothers and sisters." Well, Jesus like, um, "You lack one thing. Sell everything you have and give to the poor, and you will have treasures in heaven. Then come follow me." See? Jesus being a great teacher. And Jesus, uh, somebody got something? And Jesus understanding what all's going on. He knew the right things to say. And the things that he saying was, because Jesus didn't, you know, he didn't have to say this to know where this guy stood. He already knew where he stood. This was something that he was telling, telling this guy, so this guy can know where he standing, when it comes to the kingdom of heaven. When it comes to eternal life, is that, you know, it's, it's, it's good not to murder, it's good not to commit adultery, it's good not to steal, it's good not to give false testimony, and it's good to honor your mother and your father. But it's better to take it a step further. Why are you doing all these things? Why, why you not stealing, you know? Well, what we see here, I kept this since I was a boy, so basically, I'm not doing this because the law said not to do it. Well, where Jesus trying to, the point where Jesus is trying to get us over to is, we change our, our motive, you know, our motive operation, if you will. It, it's no more because the law tells me to do it, it's because I have a love. This is the love that Jesus trying to bring about, which is amplified within us when we, as we receive the Holy Spirit. Because he's saying here is, "Yeah, you probably worked hard to get what you got, you comfortable, and everything is smooth, going great with you, but I want you to come and get in, I want, I want you to come out of that comfort and get into ditches for your brother and your sister." Are you willing to do that? Are you willing to sacrifice yourself so somebody else can benefit? And so, here, when he, Jesus told him that, you know, he came up there thinking he was doing something. And when Jesus actually pointed out what he need to do. And then it says he was saying, "When he, you know, when he heard this, he became very sad, because he was very wealthy." So in other words, Jesus telling him this, he was worried more about getting rid of his money now than he was about the kingdom of heaven.
Amen. That was, hang them, his money.
That's his value, yes.
Right, his, his money, he had trust and confidence in his money, you know? His money was his happiness. His money was his God. That's why he couldn't get rid of it, you know, because that was his God that made his life comfortable. And he was in, he had that secure, because he had that money.
Yes, yes.
That was very, that was very difficult, and he could not do it. He couldn't do it. You know, and sometime God be telling us to give up something. And we look at the value of it and say, "Well, we can't, I can't do that." You know? But he, he, he missed out, because he was gonna get something so valuable. More valuable than money, more valued than prestige, he was gonna get something more valuable. You know, and sometime God tries us too, he was trying him, to see where his heart is. And a lot of times, God will try us to see where our heart is. You know, "Are you willing to, to give up what I've given you and to share with others?" You know, we got to have the, we got to have the heart of Christ. We got to want what he want, okay? And we have to do what he have done. So, you know, if you wanna walk with Christ, we got to give up everything else. You know, and accept him as our Lord and Savior, that he's will rule our lives, and anything that we got is his. Our car, our clothes, our money, our house, everything belong to Christ. You know, even ourselves, and he want us to give ourselves to him. You know, so he can, so he can use us in these last and evil days. God is calling for the church, he's calling to anoint the church, so the church can go out and tell everybody about Jesus Christ, no matter who they are, cross racial barriers, you know? Culture, you know? And to let them know about Jesus Christ and what Jesus Christ have done.
Yes.
He, he, he has done so much for humanity, and we know, we know the stories, so we can't keep our mouth closed. You know, we got to tell everybody, I don't care if they don't like it, we got to preach in season and out of season, you know? We have to just let them know, because that's the love of God that's in our hearts, we have the love of God. And when you love God, and you love his people, you're gonna give them the truth. When you, when you see them living a way that God has not desired for them to live. Amen.
Amen, thank you, thank you for that. Anybody else wanna add something?
Brother Chris, I'd like to add, in the scripture that follows what we're just talking about, one of the things that just kind of caught my eye, is he's talking to the disciples, and Peter tried to, and I'm reading for the message. Peter tried to regain some initiative. "We left everything we own," just like the, he asked a rich ruler to do. "We left everything we own and follow you, didn't we?" And Jesus says, "Yes, and you won't regret it." "No one who has sacrificed home, spouse, brothers and sisters, parents, children, whatever, will lose out." It will all come back, multiply many times over in your lifetime. And then, listen to this, and then the bonus is eternal life.
Eternal life.
So the, um, rich ruler did not stick around to see the end of the story. He was too focused, as Sister Mona just said, Evangelist Mona just said, he was too busy trying to hold on to the stuff that God had given him.
Yes. Yes, amen, thank you. And, and with that, you know, you, you bringing that up, something else I see here too, is that when we notice here, that when he made that statement, and Jesus said, you know, says, "Yes," said Jesus, "And you won't regret it, no one who has sacrificed." Okay, so, in this here, you know, this, the story here that, that, that happened, we see that a rich young ruler, you know, maybe came with his intention of trying to buy his way into eternal life. Okay, so what we see here is, it's like Jesus is saying, "You can't buy your way into it, the only way to get into it is you got to make the sacrifice."
Amen.
You gotta sacrifice some things. And, you know, when we think about sacrifice, and we think about buying, you know, you know, so, so you buy something, you give money to get it, right? Or you, you, you give up something to get it, even if you give up everything to get it. You know, you, you're, it's like you're, you're buying it. You know, sacrifice, you give up things, so, you, you sacrifice something for something. So when we see here, the difference is, in buying something, it's like you are in control, or you own something that you've given to receive something. When we sacrifice something, you know, it's, it's, it's like we're giving up something, realizing that, one, you know, I'm giving this up, not because I'm going to get something, but I'm giving this up, be, you know, it, it, I'm, I'm sacrificing this for the benefit of, you know, well, the benefit of the kingdom. I'm giving this up for the benefit of the kingdom, it ain't much, you know? It really, I don't really believe it's mine, I believe it's God's anyway. So I'm giving it up for the benefit of the kingdom. And whatever he blessed me with, you know, if I don't receive nothing back, good. If I do receive something back, even better. So, so when they're saying we sacrificed, you know, it's like, we just gave all this up for the kingdom. You know, we just, you know, or, or we realize that it wasn't ours, so we just basically, you know, sacrifice it before God, so that we can, you know, enhance the kingdom. We can work for the kingdom, we'll be, we'll be fit for the kingdom, because we don't have this baggage. Now, being rich and buying something, it's like, "This is mine, I earned this. Now I'mma take this and trade it for that." And sacrificing is not the same. Okay, that makes sense? So what I'm seeing here is, you know, it's like Jesus, um, giving a, you know, different rhetoric between somebody that could come in and just buy something versus somebody who is basically trusted in God, that I could make it to the, you know, to, to, to the next level, I could make it through the next stage. And, and so what that is, is this rich guy is depending upon his money, his money becomes his God, his money become his, um, um, you know, I guess you say safe haven, you know, as long as I got this money, I'm fine. You know, but when I don't have this money, you know, it's, 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 you know, I, 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 I got a full bank account, well, when the bills come, I don't have a problem. You know, I'm good. Well, I don't have anything in the bank, can I trust God? Can I see me through this?
That's right.
You know, and so, and so that's the difference we're seeing here.
Yes.
You know, one got wealth, thinking that they can buy their way in. And then you got the other that really, you know, don't have the wealth, but is willing to contribute, or, or willing to, uh, uh, put it away for the kingdom.
Amen.
And so what we have to understand is, when it comes to the kingdom of God, it is greater, it is greater than anything that we could possess.
Amen.
Okay?
Amen.
All right, anyone got something else they wanna add? And so, when we see this, um, and Jesus make this comment, that, um, all right, so first of all, he says, let's see where, where it is, he says, "When he heard this, he was very sad, and Jesus looked at him and said, 'How hard is it for a rich, for the rich to enter to the kingdom of God? Indeed, it is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for someone who is rich to enter the kingdom of God.' Those who heard this asked, 'Who then can be saved?' And Jesus replied, 'What is impossible with man is possible with God.'" So here, what we're seeing here, you know, first of all, Jesus give a statement that, in people's mind, they think, "Wow, that's, it's, it's impossible for that to happen." But when Jesus is speaking about the rich, in this instance, he's talking about, um, this, that state of mind. You know, and what I mean is, someone that's got the possessions, or you can basically say possessions got them. They're, they're so focused on their possessions, that that's all that matter. My possessions first, everything gets second. See, that's the mindset, he's not coming against, you know, people owning stuff, people having money. Is, that's, that's not a, that's not, um, you know, uh, he, uh, he's not speaking against that. He's speaking against, when you have the money, this type mindset that you're in. You know, is your money your main focus, or is God your main focus? You know, what you doing with your money? Are you trying to, you know, you're trying to lift somebody up? Are you still trying to get more, you still trying to get more? So where is your focus, where is your heart, where, you know? Do you allow the Holy Spirit to lead you in, um, you know, in things? Or do you, you know? I can, you know, you know, I can, I can go and I can help these over here, but if I go over here, it's gonna cost me this. So we're putting out money before, um, doing God's work. So, we're putting out money before, um, doing God's work.
Yeah, the Bible really, um, has words it really well, verse twenty-five, for it is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man, and here's the important part. Who places his faith in wealth or status to enter the kingdom of God. And Dennis has been watching some documentaries about, um, millionaires. And it tells about their life and how they acquire their wealth and blah, blah, blah. But what I noticed about each of the, the stories they all have in common, is at the end, the guy dies. So, and I think, think of the verse, well, uh, forget how it's, what, what does a prophet demand to gain the whole world and lose his own soul? Money is not going to get you into heaven. My pastor in New Jersey says, I've never seen a hearse with a U-Haul behind it. It's only, you know, having a relationship with God, and that's what Jesus is trying to explain. I'm su- I'm sure these verses have helped, you know, many rich people.
Amen.
And, okay. All right, and so, and, and that's, and that's true, um, you know, the things of this world is gonna stay in this world. Um, so, you know, we have to focus and be spiritual minded.
Brother teacher, I'm glad you said that, with, I was, that's what I wanted to add, is the spiritual mindedness. Is that, um, um, that, is to get people in the mindset of operating within the kingdom. A lot of times, folks, we're, we're thinking that the kingdom is a place. But it's actually a condition. And so, um, he's conditioning of us, who were um, to operate with different value principles. And when we start, um, when we ga- gather these values and we adopt these values, then it affects our, as, if, if reflect, um, affects our relationships, all of our relationships. Now, when I have these certain values, all right, then my judgment is different. Cause it's not based on the same values that they were before. So now my decis- decision-making processes actually have a different result, because they come from a different place.
Amen.
So, a lot of times, is that, this is the deal, is that, um, anytime that you wanna check your Christianity, or check your, you know, check our, if we wanna check, um, our, um, uh, how close we are to where the kingdom of God is. All you have to do is deal with a financial situation with people.
Amen.
Yes.
And, and when you, when you do that, it, it will tell you everything, a lot of things that you need to know. You'll, you'll find out whether or not they understand the principles of abundance. And they find out whether or not they trust God, you can find out whether or not they believe there's scarcity in God. And so if you, if you mention something and try, look, we're going to do this. And folks like, you know, start saying, and start backing up and saying, well, I don't know if we can do that because it's gonna cost. Or, I don't know what is, if I can do that because it's gonna cost me. Or, you know, if we do that, we might run out of money. Okay, so when did you see that God ran out of money?
Everything belonged to him.
Everything belongs to him, he is a supplier.
Yes.
And he will supply every joint. And he will supply every joint, meaning, so, the thing is, is that, when, so, a lot of times, I've, you know, I've been in, especially with, with the church family, you know, situation is that, um, when you start making decisions and planning and doing these things, then when it rises up that you can't do this because, you know, then it tells you, you know, it, it tells you a lot about your preparation for kingdom operation. And so, so, and, uh, um, so, you know, th- if we look at, um, you know, this in a holistic way, um, it is a part of a, in a larger lesson, right? So when we look at instances, do, do, we go all the way back to when Joshua and, and Joshua was fighting, and, and the folks were not prevailing. But the reason they were prevailing is because somebody had, was hoarding something in the camp. And Joshua was saying, you know, God, and went to God and said, look, there's a, there's a problem, Lord, we're not prevailing. And God said, go check your camp out. There's, 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 uh, somebody is actually hoarding something in the camp. Value what God's direction is, people, about three thousand people getting killed because somebody was keeping a thing they shouldn't have kept. Y'all, y'all remember?
Yes.
You can go, um, to another instance, and, and that's the Old Testament, New Testament. You so, they said, okay, we're all getting together, we're selling this, and we're gonna give it to the church.
And a nice and satisfying.
Okay, there you go, what happened? They, they held back.
Right.
Right? They operated in a spirit, spirit of disobedience and a spirit of, of, um, limitation. That if I don't keep this, then I won't have it.
Right.
Okay, so then, they're telling God, he's a liar, cause he can't supply. So that's like, that's like blasphemy. Right, I, I'm not, I'm not trusting God, I'm here. Church, I'm not trusting God as a, as a full supplier, so I am going to manipulate it.
Yes.
Because I don't believe that God is gonna supply.
Amen. Keep some from myself.
Keep some.
Okay, that's right, cause I don't believe that God is gonna supply.
Oh my God.
Right, yeah, yeah, so, the thing is, is that, you know, sometimes when we're, we're, you know, when God comes to us and asks the church to do a certain thing or a certain movement and stuff, there, um, okay. Um, then there's a situation where all of a sudden, everybody becomes accountants. And so, the, the lady gets, and she breaks down a basket box and, and stuff, and, you know, and start putting the perfume on Jesus' feet, what's the problem? But, but, was there accountant, didn't the accountant come on?
Right.
Y'all teachers helped me, am I mixing it up? We could have sold it, don't, look, don't waste that on God's feet. We can operate in a different place. So, now, we're operation, operating whether in, rather than in kingdom business, in our kingdom operation, we're operating in a law of scarcity rather than abundance.
Amen.
So, um, then, and then I'll, I'll give one more instance. Okay, in a co- in, 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 in the economy. Okay, so now, I'm gonna stretch it a little bit to see if you could see it, cause I believe it's the, the same principle. The man is at the pool of Bethesda, right? And he's saying that during a very narrow session of blessing, that, that's the only time you can get blessed. So, during the period of time where the water is troubled, that's the only time I can get a healing.
Yep.
And what did he, what did Jesus tell him?
Take up your bed and walk.
Did he say, wait for the water to be troubled again to do?
No, no it didn't.
Is in a bill, is in abundance, as long as there's a presence of the Lord.
Amen.
So provision, all provision, whether it's vision, or whether it is, um, uh, uh, two little fishes? Or whether it's a tithe and an offering? Whether it's the church deciding to give to a cause? We have to operate in, in kingdom business.
Amen.
Because that honors God, that honors the promise of the provision.
Amen.
Amen.
Right, amen.
Okay, so I wanna, I wanted to make sure that we realize that Jesus is, is not just teaching this parable about the about this man's personal position, for, um, possessions. They're teaching about this man's spiritual position. Because your spiritual position in Christ will tell you how to do with yours, your possessions.
Amen.
Okay, I, I'll be quiet.
Amen.
Okay, all right, let's, um, let's move on to verse, um, thirty-one through thirty-four. Let's might read that.
It says, uh, Jesus took the twelve aside and told them, uh, we're going to Jerusalem and everything that is written by the prophets about the Son of Man will be fulfilled. He will be handed over to the Gentiles, they will mock him, insult him, spit on him, flog him, and kill him. On the third day, he will rise again. Uh, the disciples did not understand any of this, the meaning was hidden from them. And they did not know what he was talking about.
Thank you, class, somebody wanna start discussion on this, these verses?
But it, that, that, that was letting the people know that what were gonna happen to Jesus. But they didn't understand, because at the time when they was telling them about it, they couldn't see, see that part. It's by like say, what's today? Um, until we get this, the real see thing is that we have that relationship with God, and our eyes open spiritually. That we'll be able to see things that was told to us that gonna happen, that gonna come to pass. And let us know that even when he was killed and rise again, but he still live again. So, see now, we understand that by that relationship that we have with him and relationship that we got out of his word, and being, uh, connected to the spirit of God. And, 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 and it's open our mind, and it open our heart, and our belief and our faith begin to build up, and we begin to trust even more.
Amen.
Okay, all right, somebody else wanna add something?
On thi- this day and age, they would call that a spoiler, spoiler alert. He's, he's saying what's gonna happen before it happens. Um, and, uh, they, a lot, I mean, they just didn't soak it in, they were just shocked. They didn't really understand it. But, uh, he, he was letting them know that this, this is gonna happen before it happens.
Okay.
So there's no question about it, that they, that they didn't know.
Okay.
The thing is, is this a- absolutely right, is that if we, if we understand you know, the history of, of all the prophets, the prophets are kind of foretelling. Um, and then, you know, uh, Jesus is actually, um, in, in alignment with the things that have been told in the Old Testament, um. New Testament actually reflects all of that, including Revelation. Um, then, you know, that, that, uh, you know, Daniel is a preacher. They tell folks that these are the things that are gonna be happening on, in the time. And, and, but at the same rate, um, there was probably some, some, not probably, there was some disappointment. Folks were, if you remember the culture of these folks, they've been oppressed by one culture after another. They came out of, you know, they were, they went into slavery and, and worked, you know, actually were indentured servants for, you know, hundreds of years in, um, you know, Pharaoh. And, and then they were attacked by different, um, you know, had different challenges with different sectors of people, the, the promised land was held back from them, from this situation. Now, they're in the, they actually, remember, they're in the promised land. But the promised land is occupied by, by the Roman soldiers now. So now you got an empire, then you've got the Persian Empire also. Um, and so, they still don't have this freedom that their forefathers kept praying for. This liberty, or just liberation. So, um, now, when Jesus comes on the scene, what they envision, because they're jockeying for position. Oh, this, well, look, man, when you establish this kingdom, which they're thinking is an earthly kingdom, then I wanna be on the right hand and the left hand, I wanna be general so and so. I want you to cut me off a piece of land, all of this, you know how we do, and whatnot, when, once you get elected, I wanna job. And so they're looking on a very flesh level, and Jesus is, is of course, getting them sober. Saying, folks, this is what's gonna happen, you don't really wanna hear this. Because you want me to go get us some great big old horses and some great big old swords so that you can get back at the people who been at you. But he, he is actually telling them the fulfillment of the scripture.
Right.
That's right.
And so, a lot of times, even though that, um, that those folks who are giving the gospel, including the gospel himself, folks are rejecting that because it doesn't fit the story they want to hear.
Man, okay. All right. Someone else wanna add something? Okay, so, here, um, notice Jesus predicting his death, you know, he's predicting it again, he predicted earlier in these scriptures we seen. And, and now he's doing it again, um. So, um, and notice now, he's not talking to the crowd, he's just talking to the twelve. Um, and, you know, he's letting them know, hey, we're going up to Jerusalem. So, you know, and it says, and everything that is written by the prophets about the Son of Man will be fulfilled. He's letting them know that, he's also saying, he will be delivered over to the Gentiles. Notice it says he will be delivered over to the Gentiles. Now, um. What we, when we look at this, and we see, you know, Jesus, he came on earth to bridge that, um, you know, to, to be a bridge over that, 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 if you will, the ravine, or, you know, where, um, uh, when Adam and stand, and they were put outside of the garden. So Jesus come like to be that bridge, okay? To reestablish the um relationship between God and man. Alright, well, meantime, since the fall of man, up until the time Jesus came, come along, well, God had, um, you know, set aside a chosen people, the Israelites. Okay? And so, you know, it's not that he had respect of a people, but it was that he set aside these people to be an example of, you know, that, I'll take these people, they could be an example, and, um, you know, that, that's, that's where that is to be an example. So, in order, and, and in following his principles, and when Jesus come, had come on earth, you know, he come to God's people, the Israelites, okay? And he was born in that lineage, um, he, um, um, you know, was right there with them. He did his initial teaching and initial, um, blessings that are, and miracles that we see recorded was with, you know, the Israelites with, you know, with God's people at that time. So, when we look at the situation where, you know, Jesus, you remember the story of the lady that kind of Jesus? And Jesus said it's not fit to give the, um, kids meals to the dogs? And the lady made a comment saying, yeah, but, you know, the dolls eat crumbs that the kids drop on the floor. So in other words, you get the kids, they got, they're sufficient, they're sufficiently being sufficiently fed, they got all of this, but they don't want it all. They allow some to follow, they allow them to follow. So here, Jesus came to, um, to the Israelites, but they didn't wanna receive him. See, that was, that was God sending them there. And, and God knew this, because he knew it was gonna work out this way, because that was, would allow that the Gentiles would have the opportunity, you know, at Christianity. But here, because, um, the way it was set up, you know, the Gentiles really couldn't touch him or e- e- you know, any, you know, far as harming him, far as, um, um, you know, and even at this moment, far as, uh, receiving the, the, um, um, you know, being as part of God's people. But notice now, when he go back to Jerusalem, and Jerusalem was like the capital for the Israelites. And here, Jesus is, is saying, I'm going back to Jerusalem. And the purpose of going back to Jerusalem, you know, it really wasn't, maybe the disciple thought there were some people he needed to go heal, but it wasn't that. The purpose of going back to Jerusalem is so prophecy can be fulfilled. So, 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 you know, so this thing could be done. He had to be, um, um. The, 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 the Israelites had to say, he's not our God. They had to say crucify him. They had to say that in order to, uh, you know, for him to be handed over. Um, they weren't allowed to do any, um, crucifying by the Roman government, they weren't allowed. So they had to do their trial and then hand him over. Um, and so, and so here, um, you know, the thing had to happen that he being rej- he's being rejected by those he was sent to. And what that, and, and then that allowed for the crucifixion, but it also allowed for the Gentiles, for, for, for those that weren't Jews to become a part of being, um, uh, you know, as, as Paul says, you know, where we, we've been brought in spiritually, that's where we cry, Father. And so that, that opens that door. So he's letting them know, you know, we're gonna go there, but not only we're gonna go there, but, you know, the Son of Man will get turned over, you know, to the Gentiles. He's gonna be mocked, he's gonna be assaulted, he gonna be spit on. They will flog him and kill him. And on the third day, he will rise again. So, you know, it says the disciple did not understand any of this. His meaning was hidden from them, and they did not know what he was talking about. So here is, is the thing now, you know, the, the. Have you ever, um, experienced a case, you know, like, um, um, God will warn you on some things? And you may not understand it until it come to pass.
Uh huh.
And then when you think about it, you say, you know what? You know, um, that was, that was the thing that was coming to my mind. That was the thing I dreamed about, and I just really didn't understand what it was, but now I understand. You know, here it says that it was hid, the me, its meaning was hidden from them. You know, it wasn't that, you know, you know, it couldn't comprehend it, it was just hidden. You know, God wanted them to hear these words, because when the time come, and at the right time, he could remind them of these words, and now it, it, it adds to their understanding, uh, it adds to their faith. Um, but the words were spoken and they were put out there. It's just like when we read the Bible. We read the Bible, we read scriptures, okay, it's there, and the Holy Spirit brings it back to us when we need it in certain situations. You know, we already heard it, and now once it come back to us, it had a greater meaning because we say, hey, you know, I was in this situation, and I didn't know what I was gonna do. And I remember, you know, the, the Holy Spirit brought back to my remembrance of something that I heard or something that I read in the Bible. And now I understand how it fits in this situation. So it becomes greater within us, you know, have greater meaning within us. And so, um, you know, Jesus put this out there, and remember now, when we read the other, uh, times when Jesus made this comment, you know, um, there was just some things that, you know, Peter stood up, man, he make declarations, well, you know, it says it was hidden for them, they didn't know what he was talking about. Here in this case, maybe, maybe those words didn't need to be spoken at this time, um, from Peter, you know. Um, but sometimes we think we're, 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 we're greater than what we really are. Um, when we, and, you know, we think we can handle things, you know, if I was them, I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't. But when we get in that, put in that situation, how do you handle it? And even when we look at this situation here where it says he's going up to Jerusalem, and, you know, everything be writ, but he, where he says he will be delivered over to the Gentiles. Well, the thing we gotta ask ourselves, how many times have we delivered him over to the Gentiles? You know? And when I say how many times we deliver into the Gentiles, how many times have we denied him? How, how many times, you know, that, 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 you know, in his word, or he's directing us to do one thing and we do something else? So there's no room for us to criticize, um, them then, because even still today, in a different way, we find ourselves in the same position.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
Alright. Alright, let's do this, and, um, I think that's finished of this chapter here. We'll read verses thirty-five through verse forty-three. Somebody please. Talk about a blind beggar.
As Jesus approached Jericho, a blind beggar was sitting beside the road. When he heard the noise of a crowd going past, he asked what was happening. They told him that Jesus of Nazareth, Nazarene was going by. So he began shouting, "Jesus, Son of David, have mercy on me." "Be quiet," the people in front yelled at him. But he only shouted louder, "Son of David, have mercy on me." When Jesus heard him, he stopped and ordered that the man be brought to him. As the man came near, Jesus asked him, "What do you want me to do for you?" "Lord," he said, "I want to see." And Jesus said, "All right, receive your sight. Your faith has healed you." Instantly, the man could see, and he followed Jesus, praising God, and all who saw it praised God too.
Amen.
Okay, class, somebody want to start discussion on, on these verses? Okay, alright, so. Jesus is on his way. He's on his way. And you, you notice something about Jesus? That, um. He'll be on his way to something. But he don't get tunnel vision. He sees a situation, you know, that, that, that needs an attention. He sees a situation of faith, you know, that's where he goes, and that's what he deals with. And we notice in Jesus do his healing. You know? What, you know, way it's recorded, and we see these things. Jesus is giving his undiv- undivided attention. He's not, he's not, um, you know, it's not like he's, you know, speaking, you, you'd be, you'd be healed and, and, and instead of, you know, and, and looking the other way, trying to figure out the next thing. He's the full attention. You, you know, it's all about you. What do you want? Now, as we see this, this one, it says, you know, that, uh, crowd now, because it said a blind man sitting side of the road begging. Begging now. And he said, when he heard, uh, the crowd going by, he asked what was happening. They told him Jesus of Nazareth passing by, and he called out, "Jesus, Son of David, have mercy on me." So, you know, he's on the side of the road begging, "Can I have some money? Can I, I can have some of the food? Can I, whatever." He threw all that away. This is totally different from what we see with the rich man, because he's like, hey, you know, I, I'm in a desperate situation.
Right.
And I need some help. And I, I've heard about this Jesus, you know? And, and, and if he, if he could do, he doing the things that I heard that he could do, I know he can do this. You know? Have mercy on me.
Yes.
Have mercy on me. He didn't ask, "Jesus, give me my sight." He's asking, "Have mercy on me."
Yes, yes.
See, notice the difference. We gotta notice the difference, because the difference is, you know, give me my sight. If I was to go and, 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 and tell you, you know, give me my money, then that makes it that I'm entitled to that money, if I can tell you that. But when I'm going to you and saying, "Can I have money or, or, or have mercy on me in this situation?" That tells you that I know that I'm not entitled to it, but I may be in desperate need of. And so here, he's not saying, you know, geez, I'm entitled to have my eyes fixed, because you, you fixed the leopard, you fixed them over there, and I'm entitled for you to fix me. He's not saying that. He's saying, "Have mercy on me." I'm, I'm not worthy of anything, you know? I'm not deserving of you even, even, even hearing me. But have mercy on me. Give me this, you know, regardless of my situation, and, and in spite of, you know, who I am, I need you.
Yes.
Do, you know, I need you, I need you to hear me. Have mercy on me.
Amen.
But now, you know, it says, "And those who led the way rebuked him and told him to be quiet, but he shouted even more, 'Son of David, have mercy on me.'" Now, you know, if, it's easy for me to tell you not, you know, not to try to get out of your situation, when I'm not in that situation. When I don't know how it is, you know, uh, 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 not being able to eat, you know, um, every day, you know, having to eat every other day or something. When I don't know how that feels, it's easy for me to tell you, don't be calling on Jesus for that.
Uh huh.
But see, sometimes we have to realize where we are and understand who Jesus is.
Right.
You know, when, 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 when we know Jesus is, you know, when we know Jesus i- is, is blessing.
Uh huh.
You know, we can't allow people to hush us.
Amen.
Because here, we find this guy, he cried even louder.
Yes.
You know, I'm in a desperate situation.
Yes, that's right.
You, you, you're not in my situation. You don't know how I'm feeling.
Amen.
You should be, you know, and, and, and really in all reality, you know, in situations like that, you know, his mind, he probably saying, you know, well, you, you've been following Jesus, you've been seeing all this right here, you should be directing me to him. You should be trying to help me get from out of this situation here.
Uh huh. Amen.
And so, and, and we see this, it says, "Jesus stopped."
My God.
Ordered the man to be brought to him.
Hmm.
When he came near Jesus, Jesus asked, "What do you want me to do for you?" Now. We're calling on Jesus, we're desperate, we're calling on, we, you know, and all this, and when Jesus come along, what do you want me to do for you? We, we, we gotta, we gotta have an answer.
Right.
You know, we, uh, you know, what, what, what you want me to do for you? And this guy said, "Lord, I, I, I just wanna see you."
Yes.
You know, and Jesus said to him, "Receive your sight."
Receive it.
Your faith has made you whole, or your faith has healed you. Your faith has healed you. I have enough faith to call on Jesus because I know that he would, he can do it, and he would do it.
Amen. Right.
And I wouldn't let the crowd hold me back. I wouldn't let the crowd to say, it's not natural for you to do this. I wouldn't let my pride hold me back.
I'm on now.
It didn't matter who saw me or, or who heard, I wouldn't let none of that hold me back.
Amen.
I'll call on the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Mercy on me. I don't deserve it, but if you have mercy upon me, then I will be appreciative of it. Because it says here, you know, um, after this, it says, "Immediately he received his sight and followed Jesus, praising God."
Yes.
All the people saw it. They also praised God.
Amen.
And so, and so see, when we, we see this, we see what, um, um, you know, the, the, the order of this, you know, this guy, you know, he, 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 he heard her, he heard the crowd, and he wanted to know what was going on. Jesus is coming. You know? Jesus is coming by.
Amen.
And he called up, and he called up, and even when they tried to push him, be quiet. He called out even more. You know? Pride to the side, you know, um, boastfulness to the side, whatever he may have had or may not have had, all that to the side. And he realized, you know, here I am, and I'm nothing before him, and I have nothing, and whatever, you know, I, I just want him to have mercy upon me. Just have mercy upon me.
Yes.
And then we notice Jesus like, "What will you have, I need to do for you?" Jesus asking him for specifics, and he's told him, "I wanna see." That's where we have to be. We have to understand, you know, what, what do we need from God? What do we want from God? And we have to be careful about what we ask of God, you know, because, um, um, you know, God is, you know, a, a great God, and sometimes we ask him for something. And he'll bless us with those things, but sometimes we allow those things, um, to, to hurt us. You know, we allow those things to, to, uh, um, or, or, or sometimes those things get, get, uh, uh, grab our attention more so than what it should grab our attention. You know, God already knows what's gonna happen. It's just a lesson for us, so we have to be very careful in these situations. And so we see here that we look at tonight, we look at somebody who, who, who we will look at as having about everything, and how they come to Jesus. It's like they come to him boldly. And how they come to Jesus, it's like they come to him boldly. You know, but 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 when I say boldly, bold and pride. Bold and 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 I got all of this and I'm I'm a big me and and and, you know, and I live the great life and. And I own all of this. And how when Jesus, you know, Jesus can't use that. And then we see here where somebody that has nothing, but he's just a beggar. And all he's asking for Jesus to do is have mercy upon me. Just have mercy on me. Reactions. We see the reactions. The reaction of the 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 one that was bold, prideful, rich. I depend on my money more than I depend on anything else. He went away from Jesus sad. But the one who I got nothing, have mercy on me. He received from Jesus and he was rejoicing and praising God. So, you know, we, you know, we have to. Um, we look at these patterns and we have to try to, uh, um, put ourselves in a situation of realizing. That we're 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 nothing before God. As in Isaiah says, we, you know, our righteousness is like filthy filthy rags before God. And so we have to realize that. And we have to put ourselves in position to try to receive the righteousness of Jesus. So that's have mercy on me. Okay? So. And 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 with that, um, if anybody got anything to add to that? If not, we're gonna turn over to Pastor you. Go ahead, Garnier.
I like, because that 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 part made me look at. It makes me look at. I'm saying myself. I'm not putting nobody but myself because it makes you look back at, we all are filthy rag. And when we think of our, our filthy rag, which that seed that was planted within us. And and may not realize that it understanding that thing that was is inside of us. And like I say, sometime we, when we was coming up. And 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 God began to show us things. And we see things, but we didn't understand it. You know what I'm saying? We didn't understand, but like, they didn't understand. That Jesus had to die and leave this world. And then he told them that we're gonna come to pay. They didn't understand because like why they didn't see. And as we was, as I was coming up. I remember something used to happen to me and I I I never understand it. Until I got a little bit older. And when I begin to learn about the Lord, and be learn learn to connect with him and understand. That that it's the Holy Spirit that will open up your eyes spiritually. So that you can see God's way of doing stuff and see how God wants us to live. So, that had to be planted within us when we were born.
Amen.
Born, and when we begin to the 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 rise up, to begin to grow. That spirit begin to grow within us. And when that spirit begin to grow within us. And when we get connected with Christ in the whole world and get connected to his word. And the word begin to feed into that spirit that we got in a being of. It begin to help us open up more. To walk the way he wants us to walk, to live. Again, another thing that made me look at it, make me look at it, say, you know, sometime you go, how little things flash before you and you look back in there. Let on down life, it come to pass. See that, that's like, all these things that he told the disciples and everybody, that what 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 it came to pass. And it came behind, but still, if you go back to the Bible and every other verse, you're gonna see what he telling you, all these things. And different power that were gonna happen. And that that made me open up myself on this side of this earth. To see that the same thing that he put forth there coming again, but then he telling us what gonna happen. Where we, where on this side, where we living at, on the get on the side we're here. So, it's eye open. I I I I understand things more every day better and better. But it's the thing of getting in God's word and connecting with him.
Amen. Amen. Yeah, this blind beggar, he cried out in desperation. And you know, I believe when his, when they, all the commotion was, Jesus heard his desperation in that cry. And when you cry out to desperation, there is an answer. And when he cried out in desperation and the crowd was telling him to shut up. When you are desperate for something, you don't care what people do. You know, you don't care what they say. And that was his perfect timing. God had a perfect timing. Jesus had a perfect timing to to give him his healing. So he cried out in desperation, you know, and sometime. Uh, sometime we're too proud to cry out in desperation, but Jesus Christ is our help. He's our help. You know, when you cry out to him, he will help you. He said, when you call on the name of Jesus, anyone that call on the name of Jesus shall be saved. And he knew that, he knew that, he heard the story about Jesus coming through the towns and. Everybody that was sick, glory to God, they got a healing. So it was his time. So he cried out in desperation and God asked him, what do what do you want me to do? And he told him, he didn't say, well, uh, 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 he was specific what he wanted God to do for him.
Yes.
And and he said. What do you want me to do? The Lord said, I want to see. I want to see. And Jesus said, all right, receive your sight. Your faith. Heal you. Your faith. Your faith now faith, he didn't have faith for tomorrow. He had right now faith. Now faith is the substance of things, hope for the evidence of things not seen. And you know what? When you got faith, you trust in God. Hallelujah, you believe in God and you don't see the evidence, but you know what God said is true. And you believe in God. When you believe in him. You'll see a miracle come forth in your life. So he cried out in desperation and God is, you know, telling us, cry out in desperation. When you cry out in desperation, I will hear you and I will fulfill the need that you have in your life. Cause he is a healer. He came to heal. He came to deliver and he came to set free. And I believe that that beggar know that. Because the the news was going out, the report was all over the town. So when he said, you know, and they told him who he was. And he heard about the great things that Jesus was doing for the people in each town. So he cried out in desperation. And God gave him a heal and he said, I can see now, praise the Lord.
That's the part where his faith keeping him too. That's the part where that, yeah, that faith was, that was buried deep down, that faith opened up. And he and that's where he, his faith keeping him and he he got.
Praising God, hallelujah.
Man.
Yes. Well, we, you know, in 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 this situation and we, um, look at it and 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 a a lesson for us today also is. You know, um, crying out in desperation, have mercy on me. You know, once we were, where we are in God, um, you know, and he can have mercy on us. You know, this man, you know, the blind, um. We we we, we're can be in a situation of being spiritually blind.
Amen.
And God has come, you know, step in, open my spiritual eye.
Open it up.
And that's, that's where we need to be, you know, um. Have enough faith in God and and with everything that was said tonight. You know, in order to 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 see God, uh, in 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 these things and understand what he has for us and what he's doing for us. We have to have our spiritual.
Amen.
If if, you know, we we have our spiritual eye open.
Yes.
Then, you know, we're on, we understand some of the things that Jesus was seeing when he was dealing with people. Um, you know, we understand, um, um, how that when when we are sharing him with people. That they got our attention. Now, this was, Jesus in a crowd, a big crowd.
Yes, it was.
Focus was on this one man. The people probably, well, yeah, you you see it there. People referred to as nothing. Because he was just crying and they tell him to hush. Hush. Maybe he was dirty. Maybe, you know, he might even had an odor because, you know. But they were telling him to hush. They they're they're thinking that, you know, or in their situation, it's kind of like. You know, it it's like today, if the president come through, you you gonna, his men gonna be keeping. If you don't meet a certain status, you're not gonna be able to get close enough to even shake his hand. They gonna keep you back. And it's kind of like that. Jesus coming through. And it's like them keeping back, ah, don't say that, don't say that. You know, you you you're dirty. You're not even presentable for him. But Jesus stopped.
He heard his end would cry.
He heard him. And he stopped. Where he was. That's where Jesus was. And he gave him his undivided attention. All of the noise, all of the crowd around him. But it was Jesus and this one guy that everybody felt that was nothing. But it was just those two. And just as we read this story, you know, as when we read this. And we see this, we do not hear the crowd in this, when Jesus asking, what do you have me to do for you? It says, Jesus stopped in order to bring to. They said, when he came near Jesus, Jesus asked, what do you want me to do for you? Just as when we read that, as we don't hear a crowd around us, I believe that's how it was with this man and Jesus. It was just those two. Jesus was just that in tune with him and he with Jesus that you don't hear the crowd.
Amen.
That's where we have to be. When we dealing with people, our focus is on them. And we don't hear the crowd because the crowd is gonna say, you don't know where he been last night. You don't know what she did yesterday. You don't know how they treat this one or that. We have to not hear that crowd and do what God.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Amen. That that you know too. That 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 makes you look at it too like this, uh. I look at it like this too because. Whenever you, uh, get in a place. You can't think about all this stuff around you. And you can't let that be involved with your connection to get your healing.
Amen.
Your healing got to be on the healing part that you want to heal. But you wanna get rela- that relationship with God so that you can get that 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 connected with him. Because it's just like something a drawer. And and you're like, I'm talking now, but I can feel that that one spirit. That connect with God. Because I already know where he touched my body one day and healed me from a sickness. And all I can say is that that connection that you have and when you reaching out and you have no doubt. And when you begin to leave everything up to him and that's that healing. And when he touch your body, it leaves something within your spirit. It'll never leave your body. And all you can do is just praise God and give him thanks. But each and everything that he has done and to realize and know. That he's still able and he will come back if you ever need him again. But the thing is. You got to remember that spiritual part of your body, that that is very deep down in your spirit. Lord, I thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Yes, Lord.
That's right.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, teacher.
Thank you.
Yes, Lord.
That's Lord.
Amen.
Oh, yeah, Lord.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, brother teacher, for, uh, um, in, um. Amazing lesson, um, and thank God for an amazing lesson. Thank. That, uh, we get to see a glimpse of the kingdom.
Amen.
We get to see how Jesus is still doing those healing things.
Dance to dance forevermore. He don't change.
So given, we can still cry out. We cry out in desperation tonight. Um, but we also only in in blind desperation, but also in faith.
Amen.
He he had desperation, but he also had the faith. Um, I'll open up, uh, it's a prayer opportunity for us to touch and agree. And, um, and and our our prayers up to Jesus for more time. So, does any have, um, have a prayer request that that we can all join in on?
Yes, sir.
A a friend that lost his sister, I'll pray for, um, some strength for that family.
Hmm, amen.
Pray for the Jones family.
Amen.
Healing. For the Jones family, yes, sir.
Amen.
I pray for healing for my brother. He's back in the hospital and for my sister who continues to be in the hospital.
Hmm, okay. Others?
For, um, a customer mine that, um. Cancer came back and they they, he needs healing. Um, it's it's spreading in his body. He needs healing.
We praying for his healing.
Amen.
Amen.
Also for the Bellamy family who lost a a son.
Yes. Went by to see them tonight, check on them, and they do need some prayer.
Thank you.
Others?
Uh, just prayer out for being full, complete healing, uh, hundred percent. And and Gwen Gwen's sister and, uh, and thank you to. God for, uh, sparing Gwen today, um. There's a deer that was heading right in. She was pleading the blood of Jesus. She was running. Running late to work and the deer stopped. I mean, just froze. And that that's unusual for a deer to do that. So there were no accidents or anything. She just kept going, but she.
Amen.
At work and and so praise, praise reports with God.
Amen.
And pray for the protection over our power grid. Because they attacked North Carolina power grid. So let's let's pray, you know, for the protection, that they won't come in and destroy the power grid.
Amen.
I'd just like to put everybody in for. Everybody all over the world, all leadership. And I also like the healing of the mind. And the healing of the body. And the healing of the heart.
Amen.
Amen. Any others?
Healing for my oldest sister. She got asthma, feel bad.
Hmm, okay. Amen.
Praying for all leaders. Pastor you and First Lady, we pray for you. Wellbeing and your health and your children and my pastor and my apostle.
Amen.
Praying for strength. Uh, you you and, uh, Philia. And, uh. For, uh, Ron Gordon, uh, continued strength and healing.
Amen.
I'd like to pray for, um, I. For my sister Glenda Blackman, just for Grant and trying to care for ten grandchildren. Um, two of which are teenagers.
Um, Ms. Gina, Ms. Diane's niece, um, she also suffered from a stroke, so just keep her and her family a prayer. For strength and healing. Um, continue healing for brother, um, Pee Wee. Um, also for, uh, Sister Brenda and her mom. Her mom has been sick as well, so just keep them in prayer. Um. Also, um, praying for Monique and Nelson, I think a relative of theirs lost her home. Uh, in a fire, uh, this past weekend, so just keep them in prayer.
Amen. Amen. Like, um, also place myself in, in there for complete healing, had a, a back situation yesterday.
Yes.
So, um, um, I, um, just, I'm thanking God for healing already.
Amen.
So let us, let us, um, bow and, and, and pause. Heavenly Father, dear God, you heard the petitions, Father, and we're, um, we're like the beggar beside the road. We're, we're gonna call out and nothing's gonna keep us silent. Um, we, we, we believe in you, we, we've heard about you, but we also know about you because each one of us has our experiences with you.
Yeah, that's what.
Be on here tonight. So we honor you as being powerful and wise, um. To you, dear God, as being people and willing to fix those situations that we cannot fix. Dear God, we thank you, dear Lord, that you have on us. That grace and mercy indeed follow us all the days of our life. And dear Lord, we just say thank you, God.
Thank you, Father.
You are already at the hospital, so we won't tell you to go. We'll just tell you to move. God moved into the spirits and the souls of those. Yes, physical, but most of all, dear Lord. That in this season, that, um, we, um, just want to make sure we keep the main thing, the main thing.
Yes, God.
Dear Lord, that this is about the birth, the, the greatest gift that could ever hap- happen to us. Understand the wages of sin, yeah. The wages of sin is death, that, that. We, that's the wage that we actually deserve. Um, ten times, a hundred times, a thousand times over. We've got that many death sentences, but one drop of blood.
Hallelujah.
One drop of blood on Calvary.
Yes, Lord.
Blood on Calvary is enough to wash away all our guilty stains. We thank you for the gift that you gave us. But even when you gave it to, gave Jesus Christ to us to a baby, that gift was incomplete if it were not for Cal.
Hallelujah.
If it was not.
Thank you, Lord.
That is the offering, Father, that gives us the opportunity to come to you as righteousness.
Yes.
And the prayer, a righteous man, um, and avail as much.
Yes, Lord.
But we thank you, dear God, for the Holy Spirit counting us righteous, to the transformation causing, causing us to be righteous. For the, that perfect sacrifice causes us to be able to speak in righteousness and to live in right. And so, all of that is external, it comes from a gift, there's no room for self-righteousness. The only righteousness we have has been afforded to us by the, by the grave and the resurrection.
Thank you, Lord.
And we thank you for that.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you.
Spread the same anointing, uh, that gave sight, um, on our lesson tonight.
Yes, Lord.
To our nation. Give. Little kids, give sight to our mothers and our fathers, give sight to our children, give sight to our principals and teachers. Give sight to social workers, give sight for those who have done, and that, uh, you want us to be a given, uh, a body. Dear Lord, give, give sight, give sight, dear Lord, to all the blindness that we have. Give sight to the blindness of race. Dear Lord, give sight to the blindness of hatred, give sight, dear Lord, for the, to the blindness of division. And the. Would see that Jesus Christ is indeed walking amongst us in the spirit, and it's time to cry out, have mercy upon us. Have mercy. Have mercy.
Yes, Lord.
We cry that out with the same faith as, as Barnabas said, dear Lord, that we cry out that same face, that same. Lord, that we will not be denied access to your throne. And so, Father, thank you tonight. We thank you, dear Lord, for what you've done. We thank you, dear God, for the testimonies. We thank you, dear Lord, for the testimonies that are coming forth, other that are coming forth. And all other prayers. So, Father, now, as we enter into this advent, this, this advent season, this expected. Father, we still, Jesus to be birthed again in those who are, that he has not birthed himself in yet, that he's not, that folks have not realized. That they need ceremony. So we need a new birth, an outbreak, Father, the, uh. It, it, we had an outbreak of disease, now we have, we need to have an outbreak of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Lord.
Right, amen. Thank you, Father.
Dear Lord, then there might be five, starting at the house of, and then moving throughout community. So, man, woman, boy will understand, they are those who are lacking, that are desperate. They would know what to do to be saved, and that's the call. It's while you do, dear Lord, before you do it, Father, we are still calling out the Hosanna. Who is, who are crying out your holy name and worship, dear God, in advance. In advance, that this is gonna. That the word that we're speaking out will be manifest through your Holy Spirit.
Yes, God.
In the name of the, and of the son, and in the holy, dear Lord, in the name of Jesus. Say amen, amen, amen.
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 Folks, thank you all so much. Thank you, uh, Brother Chris, for such a, a great, uh, teaching lesson and everybody who's into it. Uh, ministers that are, are present, our elders that are present, and our brothers and sisters in Christ, um, the beloved.
Yeah. Thank you, pastor. And Chris, good night, everybody.
Good night, little y'all.
Love you too.
Yeah, bye bye.
Hi.
Night, young boy.
All those oceans.